Good evening. I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls City Council Meeting for Tuesday, April 17th to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abidi?
Here.
Althoff?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Duncan?
Here.
Madsen?
Here.
And Mayor Robinson?
Here. All please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening, everyone. Welcome to our City Council Meeting on this fine spring day. At this time, Chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ken, second by Morris. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Carries. Move us on to public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Comments must be pertinent to city business and adhere to data privacy rules. No employing name may be used. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Anybody wishing to address the council under public input this evening? If not, we will move on to Item Six, which is a proclamation. As many of you know, Friday, we have one of our own who has been pretty successful in the music business. Will be performing at the Cannon Falls High School, Caitlin Smith. And we're going to proclaim Friday, April 20th, 2018, as Caitlin Smith Day in Cannon Falls. Whereas Caitlin Smith is a Cannon Falls native graduating from Cannon Falls High School. And whereas Caitlin has a successful music career as a songwriter, has recently released a new solo album, and performed on several national television shows. And whereas Caitlin has embarked on a nationwide tour and will be performing at the Cannon Falls High School on April 20th, 2018. And whereas the performance will benefit the Cannon Valley Senior Center. And whereas the Cannon Falls community is proud of the accomplishments of Caitlin Smith and wishes her continued success. Therefore, I Lyman Robinson, Mayor of the City of Cannon Falls, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim April 20th, 2018, as Caitlin Smith Day. In witness thereof, I run two of my hand and calls to be affixed at the official seal of Cannon Falls, Minnesota, the 17th day of April, 2018. It's great that she's been successful. It's always good to see when some of your own folks do well. And we wish her the best and glad that she's coming in to do the concert. And that's going to help out our senior citizen center. So, and the concert is sold out. Sold out very quickly, too. All right. And with that said, we will move on to the Item Seven, which is a public hearing. Resolution 2342, approving property tax abatements for Stowell Management LLC.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a public hearing this evening to consider the tax abatement application for Cannon River Winery. And Tammy Omdahl from Northland Securities is here to present the information. She reviewed their application and is ready to make a report to the council.
Mayor, councilmembers, Tammy Omdahl with Northland Securities, serving as financial advisor to the city on the review of the application. Following the public hearing, you have a consideration of a resolution approving a tax abatement. I would note that tonight, you are not approving the development agreement. You are approving the resolution that would give you the authority to consider that request. With that, just briefly, I will hit on some high points of the request. The city did receive an application for tax abatement assistance for the Cannon River Winery. The assistance is being requested both of the city and of the county. The county will need to have their own public hearing and process and enter into agreement. So tonight, while some of the numbers are combined, you are considering only the city tax abatement. And with respect for the mayor and city council and the audience, tax abatement is really a misnomer. It is the ability of the city to look and to consider the increase in taxes that would be generated from proposed development, new improvement, and to levy those taxes and the offset from the new tax base would offset it. So there would be no impact on the city's tax rate. So there is no abatement of taxes. They actually pay the taxes. And under terms of an agreement, you provide financial assistance. With that said, the proposed term of the abatement that you would be approving is for 12 years. My understanding, the city council has discussed this in previous session and that limit was discussed. You do have the ability to go up to 15 years, but as proposed, it is a 12-year tax abatement. If they begin construction this year, which is the plan, the first year of tax increment, or excuse me, tax abatement would be for taxes payable 2020. And the final year then would be 2031. The terms, the total term that they are requesting is approximately $389,000. That includes both the county and the city portion. The city portion only is approximately $236,000. So that is the amount that you are considering this evening. The present value of that is about $271,000. So those would be costs that would be reimbursed. And the present value of the city portion in today's dollars, the assistance that you are considering, is approximately $169,000 for the 12 years. The actual reimbursement will depend on the actual tax abatement generated. It's possible that if valuation is higher than presently estimated, that would be paid off sooner and the abatement would end. The other possibility is due to tax rates or other changes in valuation, that it's possible that you would reach the end of that 12-year term and you would not have reimbursed that principal, but the obligation would end at that time. It also means their taxes would have been less than what was estimated. With respect to, this was also noticed as a business subsidy tonight. They are proposing approximately 4.8 new full-time equivalent positions. The terms of that would be spelled out in a future development agreement because it is a business subsidy. With that, I would conclude with noting that Northland did review the application in detail. A lot of that was included in the memo that you received. And it is our opinion, my opinion, that but for this assistance that the project has proposed is not financially feasible. And we can recommend to you with respect to the tax abatement as being reasonable and appropriate. With that, Mayor, council, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Did your estimates include the increase in cost that they have looked at for your proposal? Or was it based on the original cost?
It was based upon the application. So if there was an increase in cost above that, I did not receive that. So I can note that the estimated total project cost at about, say, $2,264,000. So if there's been an increase above that, I'm not aware of that.
I got a question with the Cooley Bank. The letter for the statement doesn't really, it's not really a guarantee letter. Am I correct?
I can speak to that, Mayor. That is a bank, what we call a bank commitment letter. The language in that letter is very standard, that a bank will not commit to that until they complete their due diligence. But as part of requests for public financial assistance, whether it be tax increment financing or in this case, tax abatement, that type of bank commitment letter is requested as part of the process. So I found the letter to be appropriate.
I don't know. I just questioned it.
I understand the point made, but very typical letter that was received. And again, I find it to be appropriate.
Now, with us, though, the EDA has to approve also because it's actually the EDA's land. Am I correct? David, am I correct on that?
Yeah, the EDA on a separate tract has been asked to sell land also to the development. And the EDA draft purchase agreement, which was submitted to the developer a month or two ago, ties the EDA's purchase agreement to the development agreement with the city council. So it is tied together. And the EDA and our conversations, we've been working on this project since probably September. The EDA has been pretty clear that financial commitment obviously is critical to their willingness to sell the property. So there will be a crossover relationship, city to EDA, EDA to city.
Yeah, and that's in the letter here.
Yeah.
Mayor, if I may just add to that point, too, EDAs are not able to approve tax abatements. It's just city, county, and school. So that's why they won't have any action related to the abatement.
And just for everybody else, the county today, their EDA did recommend to their county board to, for the tax abatement. And they will have their public hearing on the 1st of May, at their meeting on the 1st of May. Any other questions for Tammy before we open up the public hearing? If not, thanks, Tammy.
Thank you, Tammy.
We will move on to the public hearing. At this time, we will open the public hearing for the Resolution 2342, approving property tax abatement for Stowell Management LLC. Is there anyone wishing to address the council under Resolution 2342? Is there anyone wishing to address the council under the public hearing for Resolution 2342? Is there anyone wishing to address the council under Resolution 2342, Resolution approving property tax abatements for Stowell Management LLC? If not, at this time, we will close the public hearing and move for roll call vote. Or anybody in motion, I should say.
So we're not going to discuss? We're just going to go for a vote?
Then we can discuss.
Okay, okay. I move that we approve Resolution 22, wherever it is, 42, 2342.
Okay. A motion by Cedar to approve Resolution 2342. Second. I have a second by Ken. Discussion.
Well, I'm, quite frankly, I'm not in favor of using abatement for this project. I'd rather see some other form. I prefer TIF over abatement, but that's my feeling.
I could be wrong, procedurally speaking, but I feel like that ship has sailed because the council weighed those two options and said, we're going to go with abatement. And that was a decision that was preceded your tenure, your newest tenure. So it is what it is on that one. Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, if there's no further discussion, call for roll call vote.
Bill?
No.
Cedar?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Morris?
No.
Ken?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-2. All right, that moves us on to the consent agenda. Items on this area of the agenda may be adopted or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For the folks at home, I'll read the consent agenda. Item A is adjusting correct claims for the accounting period ending April 12th, 2018. Item B are the meeting minutes for the April 3rd, 2018 city council meeting. Item C is a second reading and adoption of ordinance 360, amending Chapter 111 of the Cannon Falls City Code concerning alcohol licenses and regulation. Item D is a rescue truck change order. Item E, approval of permit for the downtown farmer's market. Item F, Resolution 2339, declaring a vacancy on the city council. Item G, Resolution 2340, requesting conveyance of land. Item H, Resolution 2343, to establish license slash permit fees for parks. And item I, Resolution 2344, accepting a donation of $375,000 from the 930 Coffee Club to the Parks Department. Are there any items anybody wishes to remove from the consent agenda?
C.
Item C will become Item 9E. Any other items? If not, Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Who was that from? Bill?
Bill.
Okay. Motion by Bill, second by Ken. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. It's approved. That moves us on to Item Nine this evening, council business. And the first item is discussion of future bonding for the Eastside Two project and fire truck purchase. And we've got Mr. George Albertson.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. In your packets, there is a memo that I'll refer to. And my presentation tonight relates to two projects that the city is considering. Two separate financings that the city is considering. One is the Eastside Two project and the second is the purchase of a new fire truck. And so I thought it might be good to come in front of you this evening, answer any questions you may have. Because the timeline is, is we'd be looking in the month of June to consider resolutions approving the sale of the debt. So in regards to the two projects, again, first one is Eastside Two. That is, according to your project engineer, or financing, I'm sorry, construction bids will be received May 9th and considered at your May 15th city council meeting. So no firm numbers at this time, just project estimates. The project estimate on that project, and again, this might be something that is a refresher for you, but approximately 4.3 million for that particular project. Looking back at previous similar projects the city has done, certainly Eastside One, other street and utility type projects, we would be structuring this bond similarly, where we've got the street portion of the financing is structured with a 15-year financing term. And the utility portion, the water sewer storm portion, would be financed with a little bit longer length, a 20-year term. The rationale being structuring the debt a little bit longer on the utility because the useful life of the asset, if you will, is certainly longer than the street. So again, on that financing, what we'd be looking at is utilizing the city's very strong bond rating. The city has a double A minus bond rating with Standard &amp; Poor's. Couple of new faces in front of me in terms of my presentations on bonds before. But the city's bond rating of double A minus, anytime you're in the double A category, and I've said this to previous councils certainly, is, the rating agencies define that as a very strong credit. So the city has done a very nice job of managing debt, having proper management policies in place, et cetera. That leads to that double A minus bond rating. So as part of that project, because of the size and the length of the financing stretching out to 20 years, we'd certainly work with your city staff on the assignment of a new bond rating. Very likely, Standard &amp; Poor's would reassign that double A minus. And just like our personal credit, the better the score or the better the rating, the lower the interest rate that you, the city, can borrow at. So again, there would be separate action for the city to consider in the month of May, likely after you award your construction bids, calling for the sale. I thought tonight, it's a little premature to consider that official action. But probably the same meeting, May 15th, that you, following the consideration, if you will, of the construction bids, we'd have a separate resolution calling for the bond sale to take place in June. The second item is the fire truck. And that one is, and Linnell and I are working on the numbers, but approximately a $500,000 purchase. There's some local money being contributed to the project of approximately $150,000. So the overall financing would be $350,000 to $360,000 with a 10-year financing term. Very common financing approach for municipalities when they purchase equipment or fire trucks is general obligation equipment certificates. And because we've got a financing that's relatively small, $360,000, we thought we should try to keep the money local. And so what our plan here is to solicit quotes from the local banks. I've talked to those banks already and they all are interested to get more information and to potentially bid on that project. And so we'd follow a similar timeline to the Eastside Two project. Sometime in June, first or second council meeting, we would have bids, not only on Eastside Two, but also from the local banks on the fire truck financing. So, and again, there was certainly interest locally. And we'll keep in touch with the banks on that. Mayor, council, the only action for you officially to consider tonight is on your agenda as Resolution 2341. And that's a, what we refer to as a reimbursement resolution. And the reimbursement resolution's purpose is that it allows you to utilize your cash reserves to pay any project expenses that may be presented to you before the bond money is available. So it's for IRS purposes, it allows you to issue tax-exempt bonds at a later date and reimburse yourself if you do have that need to utilize some of your reserve funds. So very briefly, that's what the reimbursement resolution is. Mayor, members of the council, I know I kind of hit the highlights, if you will, on the two upcoming financings. Do you have any questions?
Yep, I'll open it up for questions on number one, which is the Eastside Two and the fire truck. Open that up for now. Anybody got questions on that?
I really didn't.
All right, the next one would be item, which is 9B, which is Resolution 2341, which is establishing procedures relating to compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code. Any, do I have a motion to?
Yeah, motion to approve the reimbursement resolution.
Second.
Motion by Cedar, second by John. Discussion. If none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. In fact, Northland Securities did two very well-done presentations tonight, very informative. Thank you for the materials that your team has supplied.
Another good job, George. That moves us on to Items 9C, which is the service line warranty program letters. Linnell?
Thank you, Mayor. You may recall that last fall, we had a gentleman come here that presented information on the service line warranty program that is sponsored through the National League of Cities. And part of that discussion was that we were going to move forward with the process. And we have moved forward, we've had some discussions with them. And we had talked about having the council approve the wording and the letters that went out to the citizens. So the letters have been presented before you this evening for your review. And I just want to make sure that the council is aware that if you move forward with these letters, we are approving the program as well. We didn't officially approve the program and the city participating in it. In November, when it was discussed, we wanted to get through the letters and see what they looked like. So that's kind of a dual action that we're requesting this evening.
Any discussion?
I have a, I have a problem. We talked about this last fall, that you're involved in the city into this. It says the City of Cannon Falls has partnered with InService. Do we want to be involved in that liability-wise? We could offer it, but...
We're not really, we're not partnering. The city is not putting any money into this program. The only thing that we're doing is saying yes, they can offer this to the citizens. It's completely optional for the citizens to participate in this.
Well, then word it that way. Offer the, offer, not say you partner.
I don't think offered is good either because that makes it sound like it's our program that we are offering. I don't like partnered and I don't like offered. Partner, the word partner carries legal significance. It means a partner, signifies a partnership. And if we hold ourselves out to a person who doesn't know differently, then it can be read that way. I don't know why I couldn't just say, Service Line Warranties of America helps eligible customers be prepared. You know what I mean? Let's just leave us out of that sentence. We're already signing the letter.
Okay.
I would, I would feel much more comfortable with that.
We're at some all the ground of the equation here.
And we're still signing the letter. I was a little, I was thinking about myself as a homeowner, receiving this letter. This letter contains important information about your responsibilities as a homeowner in the event of an emergency with your water service or sewer septic line. If that were coming from the vendor, that would be one thing. But it's coming from the City of Cannon Falls. So now we, as the city, are telling a homeowner, these are your responsibilities about your septic and sewer line. It's not untrue what it continues, but it's a little bit more alarming than I would like it to start out, than I would like to receive from the city about my responsibility. It makes it sound like I've fallen short on it if I got that.
And when we have our city logo on there, it looks like we are the ones that are sponsoring the program, whether or not.
Yeah.
I don't hate the logo. Do you guys hate the logo?
I think it's a good program.
I do, too.
I wish I would have had it available to me a couple of years ago, but...
This letter is definitely, it is from us. So I think it's appropriate to have our logo on it. But I don't like it that we are, that this takes a tone of, oh, we're trying to get their attention. I get why they wrote it this way because it's trying to get the letter opener's attention, make him read the whole thing. But that's doing it by causing alarm. And I don't think that's something that I'm 100% comfortable with. There's got to be a softer way to say that. Maybe it's skipping that whole first line, too, because it's really just throat clearing in order to get attention. It doesn't offer any new information. The next paragraph after it actually explains what those responsibilities are. So let's just jump, cut to the chase.
So you're proposing to eliminate the first paragraph?
Mm-hmm. But other than that, I think it does a good job of talking about what's optional, like why it's optional and not required. And what a homeowner would stand to, how they would stand to benefit if they chose that coverage.
I agree. I like the idea, but I had concerns about some of the wording. So I'm glad you're here, Cedar, to point out some of that.
Glad to be here.
Any other discussion? If not, do we want to table this? Take a motion to table or?
Maybe we can make, table it until we reword it and maybe come back with it.
Well, if we're just proposing to eliminate the paragraph, that's pretty simple, cut and dry.
And then the clause at the beginning of what would now be the second paragraph, the City of Cannon Falls has partnered with.
Right.
Right. And so that whole sentence would have to be reworded to make agreement. But I mean, it's not hard.
And we can certainly table it if you feel more comfortable in doing that and bring it back. It's up to you. Or we can direct them to make the changes that you discussed. And that's why the letter needs to go out. It's your call.
It's up to you guys.
I think I'd rather table it so I can see what the corrected letter looks like. And then bring it back next, next meeting.
We can do that. Okay.
Okay.
Right, second.
Motion by Bill.
That's my motion, yep.
Motion by Bill, second by John to table it. Any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Moves us on to item 9D, which is the pool staff wages for this year. Lanell? Just had another piece of paper.
The Personnel Committee met this evening, and one of the items on our agenda was to review the pool staff wages. As you may recall, um, we approved the pool manager wage earlier this spring. I guess we can call it spring, whatever. Um, anyway, and so, we were proposing as staff to establish, um, a set wage structure for the pool staff. We have not had that in the past, and it has caused some problems, um, with the new minimum wage laws. Once someone reaches 18, they are required to get this minimum wage. And so, we were faced with a situation where some first-year, uh, pool staff maybe started when they were young, or before they were 18, they got a certain wage. During the summer, they turned 18, then we had to up their wage, so now they're making more than their counterparts who are doing the same job. We also had a situation where we had a returning staff member, um, that was then making less than that person. So, long story short, what staff is proposing is that we do away with any age information. We're setting a step system for the lifeguards. What we were proposing is step one currently for 2018 would be $9.65, which is the minimum wage. Step two is $10.12, three, $10.59, four, $11.06, and five, $11.53. We're also proposing, uh, wages for the assistant managers at $13 an hour. So, by setting this type of a system in place, it eliminates some of the problems that we've seen in the past, and it makes it much easier in the staff, uh, for staff in the future to have this as a guide to go forward. It will be subject to COLA increases, which would be the same as what other staff would be approved throughout the year. So, that would correlate with this, too. But this just eliminates a lot of the problems, and we would like recommendation, or the Personnel Committee recommended that we approve, the council approve this.
Yeah, Personnel Committee recommended it tonight to bring it to council. Any discussion? Not chair, take a motion to approve the pool staff wages.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Ken, second by Morris. Anybody else? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Moves us on to item 9E, which is Ordinance 360, uh, amending Chapter 111 of the Cannon Falls City Code concerning alcohol license and regulation.
Yeah, I pulled that down. We've got this in front of us, but it doesn't specify what we're talking about with Joe and Peter. I got a call from each one of them today, and they'd like, I guess this is a specific ordinance just for Artisan Plaza, but there's a few things I think I'd like included in that before we approve this. Talking with Peter and Joe, um, you know, we should specify that, like, it's off-sale only in that 60, 600 square foot space. Uh, it's gotta be local wines and beer only, within maybe a 200-mile radius. Uh, no liquor, and not displayed. It was supposed to be under the counter. There's a few things we talked about when, when Dave was here last meeting and Joe and Rod were here that didn't get put in this, and they're a little concerned to like it in there.
And now, we do understand that the reason they're not in there is because our position is the state law fills in those gaps and supplies those terms. And that's fine, but I think we're asking, would it not be, can't, can't we also have it? Can't we do boot, uh, what, belt and suspenders on this? Can't we include some of that?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I spoke with both the license holders, uh, as well, and provided clarifications to them, and you're correct, some of the provisions that we talked about at the last council meeting are stat, are state law, and they're not included in our ordinance. So, I did discuss that with each one of the two. The limitation in terms of the, of the premises itself, the 600 square foot, that was an addition based on the council recommendation at the last meeting. And so, that 600 square foot maximum area is specifically identified in the Artisan Plaza commercial retail space that we talked about, and yes, liquor inventory, or excuse me, not liquor, beer and wine only inventory, uh, is only allowed to be stored beneath the countertops, as, as we discussed before, before, but that's a state law requirement, not a local ordinance. So, I think as, as I spoke with both of them, John, that, I think I've clarified all the issues that, that they've spoken with you about, too, and I think they're, they're comfortable with having those clarifications, knowing that, that there's a, a state law requirement as well.
Yeah. They're not familiar with the state, and they didn't see it in this ordinance, that's why they are a little...
They're not comfortable with it.
They're not comfortable with it.
Dave stated, I'm getting emails from both of them as well, and although they've heard you say the state law provides those terms, because they have neither seen nor are familiar with what exact provision in the state law, and whether or not that could be changed as, for example, Sunday sales have been, right? State law changes, um, they're not totally satisfied with that.
They're comfortable with the clarifications that I provided, how about that?
Okay.
Yeah, okay. So, I think, again, the, the, the concerns that, that I know Joe expressed at the last meeting, Peter expressed to me both by phone and email before the last meeting, were as much about the future concerns as the specific application of this amended ordinance, if it's passed, to Artisan Plaza and David Olson. I think those concerns still, you know, still exist from their standpoint, but I think with the clarifications that I spoke with them about, that they understand now why the things that the council talked about and that we talked about together at the last meeting didn't find their way into this revised ordinance, only the 600 square foot limitation did.
I can see where you're coming from. This ordinance, you know, eliminates a lot of people down the road from, you know, with the 600 square feet and 10 parking stalls. It eliminates a lot of the potential competition, but they were just a little concerned with what they talked about wasn't made clear to them, I guess.
Right.
And, and the liquor conversation we had, and, and again, I had to correct myself earlier, that, again, this is wine and beer only in terms of the combination license for off-sale. There is no liquor here, no hard booze, nothing other than wine and beer.
So, Joe, at 6 o'clock, says, "I don't know about Minnesota state law providing the terms. I don't know how confident I can be in that answer, only because I couldn't find anything stating any of those specifics, like selling only from underneath the counter, et cetera." It doesn't mean there aren't in Minnesota state law, no one's saying they aren't. We're saying that the, these license holders are not confident in the answer right now. Um, also, this leaves out the local thing, right?
Right, right. There is, there is nothing in this amended ordinance from our last conversation dealing with the local question. We talked about it, but there was no direction given to define what, what really is local.
I can't remember how that played out. Did we, did he say, "I'm not down with local," and we caved on that, or what did we, I don't remember how that went?
Oh, we went with 200 mile radius and all that.
We talked with, uh, Mr. Olson about that, and his idea of local was within a, a few hundred miles. He wasn't gonna go to South America to get it or anything like that, but, uh, I don't think any of us could agree on what was considered local. You know?
Right, right.
Is it local 50 miles, is it 200 miles?
I would say that's fair representation of the conversation, yes. It was just difficult to get everyone's arms around what really is local.
Yeah. I will say both license holders separately mentioned 200 miles. That didn't sound like something that David Olson was opposed to, 'cause it's big enough.
Well, this per, this license couldn't be passed on if it...
Correct.
Right.
If it would end, you know, if you were afraid somebody would, you know, if he got out of it and then passed the license, I'd be selling Pabst under the counter and all that stuff.
And Joe seemed fine with them, uh, selling, uh, from the 100 mile or whatever, you know, further distance.
Oh, yeah.
Especially considering how they're limited in quantities that they can keep on stock.
Right. Yep.
And that's kind of why we kind of backed off and left it also, so...
That's why we backed off the local definition?
Well, backed off of limiting it to, uh, 10 miles or, you know, uh...
Something very narrow.
Yeah, very narrow.
Yeah, then go to Rapid City and bring it back.
Okay, I feel like there's two questions. One is, how much, if at all, do we want to duplicate what's in state law? As, in terms of it has to be under the counter, and it has to be this, and you can't do that, that stuff. And the second question is, do we want to put a requirement about local procurement? And if so, how do we define local? Right? Those are the two questions, at least that are, have been raised by the other, the two license holders, both of whom would've, they expressed they would like to have been here tonight. Does anyone feel like we need to duplicate what's in state law?
I, I don't feel need to put, if it's already in state law, why, why increase the length of our ordinance unnecessarily?
I don't disagree.
Now, if someone wanted to put something in about how far local is, well, that's another story.
Right, that's a second, that's a different question. Good point.
Considering how...
I just, I just wanna make the two people happy, 'cause they're the ones that are making a living with it.
Right. Right, and but last week, it was certainly, uh, Joe and Rod were, seemed to be okay with that.
Well, they were, but it is, they're confused, it's not spelled out.
Right, they thought that everything we talked about was gonna be in this ordinance. So, when we sent it back and said, "Work up the ordinance," they thought they'd see the results of what we discussed appearing on the face of the document, and they didn't. So, they are...
Yeah, and the only thing we added to the ordinance was the 600 square feet from the 500 and some that had been talked about.
Well, so, what, what state, what's the state law section that requires under the counter?
What they're gonna have to do, Cedar, is, is contact the department, and that's really, and, and where we receive that information, too, from Diane to the state. And there's several ordinance, or excuse me, several legal requirements that have come through administrative rules, I think, and these probably fall within that category. So, you're not gonna find them in state statute. I didn't find them either. But in our conversations with the State Department, it's been made clear to us, abundantly clear to us, that the provisions that we talked about are required by the state of Minnesota for this combination license.
Could, can we get copies of that to get to, to those guys?
I think it's fair to, for us to request something in writing from them, so we can share that with the two license holders.
There we go.
I think that's what we should do.
There you go.
The issue there is, this is not your traditional off-sale liquor.
Right.
Because it's a combination. There's separate provisions that, that govern that, and in this case, because they're not having a separate entrance, typically, you go to almost anywhere that sells off-sale, and it is separate from the physical entity of the rest of the business. Um, in this case, it would be combined, that's why they can't have the product out. Um, and Dave's right, I believe that's in administrative compared to the statutory, but the, the statutory components prevent them from having them on the floor. So, that, that stuff is addressed within statute, and they, uh, should be an obvious ordinance, or correction, an obvious statute that relates to, uh, the combination sales, because after our sales and stuff, all product has to be covered. So, if you were selling, let's say, any one of our licensed liquor establishments was also selling off-sale, after the off-sale hours, any stock that's for off-sale has to be covered or in some way closed off from the rest of the operation. That's already within statutes.
Okay. Okay.
So, make that request.
Yeah, an advisory opinion or something. Okay, so that's the state statute part of it. Do we want to put something about local procurement?
I don't know. Do you want to go 200 miles radius?
I'm good with that.
What's local? I have a tough time defining local.
I mean, if it's 201 miles, I mean...
Yeah, and that's, that's what I'm worried about, if we put a certain mileage, and then there's one place that's half a mile down the road from that. Yeah.
We could just stay out of it.
I trust Dave that he'd be, he'd be fair about it, surely.
We, you know, we talked, maybe the other way to get at it indirectly is we did talk about limiting the issuance of a combined license to one. Now, there's no guarantee that David Olson will apply for this license, nor is there any guarantee if he does apply that he's gonna get it, but I know that's one of the other concerns that our two other license holders had, was, well, if it goes there, what about the next one, and the next one, and the next one? They seem to be fairly comfortable with what Dave Olson has been saying that he's intending to do at Artisan Plaza, so I guess maybe if the council wanted to limit it to one, the issuance of one license only, I don't know, maybe that helps. I, I struggle a little bit, too, with the local definition, not just in, in beer and wine here, but we've, we've struggled with that in our local food programs, too. What, what is local?
I don't know that those are related, those two issues. Whether it's local and whether there's one, but I hear you.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, is, would further limit the other potential applicants that might come in, if that's what you choose to do.
Of course, a lot of potential applicants are gonna be limited due to the, um, off-street parking and reach 200 square feet.
What is a, what does an off-license cost?
I think the off-sale license is 200, but I think they, they receive $100 back when they meet certain requirements, so 100 bucks. It's much less expensive than the on-sale.
By the way, I speak only for myself here, but my, and I think now I understand why you were saying we could limit it with only issuing one. Uh, the institution of a local requirement is not, for me, intended to limit the availability of the ordinance to anyone, it's to support local wineries and whatever, and have a local flavor, which is what Mr. Olson contends he'd like to do anyways. So, they're not, they're not, I didn't see the, I didn't see the relation, but I follow you. Okay, uh, who wants, does anyone want to limit it to one? We could. It's easy enough.
I'm fine with that.
All right, let's, I'm good with that, you wanna do that? Limit it to just one? Make, should we make a motion? Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we amend the draft ordinance to be limited to only one at any one time, I imagine, right? And that's it. That's the only thing we're changing, right? Yeah.
Can that be passed with the amendment added, or does it have to come back for another vote?
So, we have to have another reading then because we changed it?
Yeah, I, I think we can add it as an amendment to this second reading, I believe. We can confirm that, but I believe we can.
Well, if you have to, we can always bring it back.
Yeah.
We'll verify whether it's changed or not, make sure that we don't have to alter the amendment because of the amendment. If we do, you will see it next time.
So, I have a motion by Bill, second by Cedar.
Cedar.
Oh, Cedar made a motion?
I don't think anyone seconded it yet.
Anybody seconded it yet? Okay, Bill did second. To amend Ordinance 360 to limit to only one license and to approve otherwise.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Moves us on to reports. Dave? Wes?
Uh, just a heads up that, uh, due to the weather, we're not gonna be flushing hydrants this week. Hopefully, start next week, but if we have to push it off, we'll push it off as soon as the curb lines clean up, so it can get down in a storm sewer. And then also, just another heads up that May 19th, we're gonna have the citywide cleanup down at the Public Workshop, so hopefully you get a good turnout for that.
What's, uh, Wes, what's included in the citywide cleanup?
As far as, what can you bring?
Yeah.
Pretty much everything, except for batteries. Now, they're not accepting car batteries, um, but pretty much everything else, except for hazardous waste or paint or anything like that, but...
Furniture, electronics.
Yep.
Not your regular garbage.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I got something, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge a couple things come up with the Fire Department. We've got our pancake feed this Saturday. We're still gonna have it, even though the weather's not gonna be what we're used to, we're just gonna be inside the station. So, we're doing stuff actually tonight to get ready for that. ready for that. I just want to acknowledge the department, we've had a busy month. We've had a couple fires, probably excessive, excessive damage over $750,000 with the last two fires we've had here in the last three weeks. We had one yesterday, and then we had the Jacobson fire a few weeks ago, so that was a pretty big loss for them. I want to thank Randolph Hampton Fire Department, they've helped us out on both of those fires quite extensively, so that was really nice of them to come over early in the morning and then later yesterday to help us out with that. So I want to do that, and then I just want to acknowledge kind of the tough conditions they had yesterday. Due to the road conditions and the weather, we had Randolph getting multiple vehicles stuck, we had some of ours getting stuck, so it was kind of a really good team effort that they fought through yesterday to actually save the house. It was a attached garage that was burning, and we left the house standing, so that was very good on a firefighting standpoint, especially way out in the rural where we're at in Warsaw Township, so. So I want to acknowledge everybody that, that worked on those fires. The other thing I want to talk about tonight is we had a change order for the rescue truck. Generally, what I see in those is about a $10,000 to $15,000 contingency, and that starts from the time we start to bid it, and we're almost a year and a half later now that we're starting to order stuff. I was giving another update today that I'm gonna have to submit another one for. I have to go through it and decide what I feel is necessary on it. It's gonna be a minimum of $300, a maximum of 1,700, depending on how I want to check the boxes on that. And that's more lighting and stuff like that that they've gone through. Every time we go through this, it seems like every, every year, everything gets outdated, and they have the newest, latest, and greatest, so we kind of want to stick with that, because it gives us the longest warranty and the longest parts available that we have. So I still think that, so far, that should be the last thing, that came from the engineers and our rep that we're working with. So everybody's kind of had their hands on where it's at now when we're ready to order stuff. The chassis should be in soon, I would think in the next few weeks, and then it's slated to hit the assembly line right when that happens. So the next phase of that would be, if there's any change orders that would come up, will be in a mid-build inspection that we go to their plant for, and we spend a good day walking through the truck pretty meticulously to make sure it's met our spec. Things are gonna happen, we even bring some of our equipment with at that point that we can actually put in the bins and make sure everything fits. And if we're gonna have any more changes, I would expect them then. We've gone through it enough and spent enough hours on it, I don't foresee anything at this time, but until we get up there and get our hands actually on the truck, that's when we make that kind of final determination. And then we do a final inspection as well, before we actually take delivery of it up at their plant as well, make sure the paint color is right, the lighting package is what we wanted, and all that fine-tuned detail stuff. So that's kind of where that's at. We are still shooting for an August delivery on that, so that's kind of the game plan for that. Other than that, the, the only thing tied into that, too, that I need to talk with Jeff and Wes tonight before we leave, is we have the old rescue truck we need to get rid of. So I've been talking to Lonell a little bit, and first thing I want to do is just reach out to our other departments to see if there's a reason we have transferred some of our fire trucks to Public Works before. I don't know if there's a reason they would need a box truck of this style to haul equipment around, but I want to have those discussions with those departments first, to see if there's any need within the city to have that, keep that truck. Then if not, what's been recommended to us by, out of custom fire, is they work with a sales broker that they highly recommend, that they'd want to recommend to us that does nothing but buy and sell fire trucks. They think that's our best bet for top dollar then, if we decide we want to sell the truck and get rid of it, that would hopefully should cover our contingency, any of our change orders, and we would hope even put some money back into the equipment fund after the sale of that truck. So, once we kind of decide that, I'll have to have a, put a memo out, because we'll have to do a motion on that to approve a direction that we want to go with that then, once we kind of establish a plan there. So I think that's all we've got coming up Fire Department-wise, so. All right?
Thanks for the update.
That's good.
Chief?
Well, I really don't have need for sort of a paddy wagon, I guess. You got some ideas, Mike, let's visit. The mayor, you already touched on, Caitlin Smith concert this Friday. The weather has been interesting, to say the least. Eventually, we will get to warmer weather and windows will be open. As we do that, the officers will start focusing a little bit more on just some of the nuisance things that comes with windows opening, so, you know, loud exhaust, Jake breaking by trucks coming through town, that type of stuff. So I just want to remind residents, as we reach that, if they're noticing something, especially a reoccurring events within their neighborhood, please, you know, let the police department know. We can't be everywhere at the, the time those are occurring, but we do like to know about them, and then we can focus our, our efforts in, in trying to identify the cause. Obviously, our, our main objective is to get them resolved. That would be if it's a vehicle getting an exhaust on it that's quiet, if it's trucks, that's a little harder, but then we can focus on them and try to make sure that we're getting the ones that aren't, or are causing the problems. So that's all I have.
Lonell?
As you may recall, we had our city auditors here in March, and I heard from our main auditor yesterday that the draft is very close to being completed, and I will be reviewing it within the next week or so, and he hopes to be here for the May 1st city council meeting to present the 2017 audit. So we're hoping to stay on track with that, but we'll keep you posted.
Bill?
I have nothing.
Cedar?
At Public Works tonight, we discussed the purchase of a new lawnmower, and I believe we're gonna need council action on that, so we'll be bringing that to you now. We have a 2010 that's going to be cycled off, right, and offered to.
Yes.
It's gonna be moved to wastewater, actually, and then wastewater is gonna take the tractor they have and try and sell it, maybe scrap it.
Yep.
And then we're, we've purchased, and we discussed our different options, lease versus buy, and given the longevity of these machines and the amount that we use them and the fact that we can maintain them in-house, it makes more financial sense to purchase rather than lease.
They hold their resale fairly well, and they're commercial units.
So we have determined which one we want to buy, and the purchase price is $9,298.91, and that is in the budget, we think, or we don't know?
We don't know.
We don't know, because of turnover in the department, so I'm not sure what we should, Morris and I didn't know exactly what we were supposed to do with it.
Just have Lonell check it out and bring it back next meeting.
Okay.
On the agenda.
We'll do. And also, if you were, one of the other effects of this extended winter, it's, what is it, January 96th, as they, as I've heard it said? If you see, there are songbirds are struggling right now because they can't get at their sources of food, so if you see a bird on the ground, it's probably starving, and you can pick it up and put it in a cardboard box, hopefully with a towel underneath it, and maybe a heating pad on low underneath that, and it can go to any of the local raptor centers. Just a word, that's all.
My compliments to Public Works, there were some mean snows you were pushing around here lately. You did a good job. That's all I got.
Ken?
I second that. Public Works did a great job of trying to keep the roads cleared in a rough situation.
Morris?